Good evening, welcome to the Portage Lakes Joint Vocational School organizational and regular meeting for 2023. Will you all please rise and join me in the pleads of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since we're all at the beginning of our new terms, we're all going to take the oath of office. Mr. Chanacki from Green will be joining us this year as our, as our third member. Welcome, Mr. Chanacki. And so we'll all rise, we'll all do kind of the oath together, and then, and then we'll proceed with the meeting. So everybody will please rise. Mr. Wright will administer the oath.
So I'll read the oath, and you'll answer "I will" in the affirmative at the end of the oath, and I will come around after the meeting to get your signatures on your oath of office. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Portage Lakes Career Center, Summit County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereinafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified? If so, please answer "I will."
I will.
Thank you.
All right. And now we will have the roll call. Mr. Wright.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Jivaden.
Here.
I already messed this up. Uh, Mr. Chanacki.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Fouser.
Here.
Mr. Hercules.
Here.
Mr. Hofer.
Here.
Mrs. McGraw.
Here.
Ms. Terry.
Here.
We'll proceed with the election of the president for this evening. We'll ask for nominations for the presidency. After repeating the name of the nominee, the chair asks for further nominations. If no response, blah, 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 we'll close it, and then we'll, the treasurer will then again call the roll to determine those in favor of the nominee for president. Whoever gets the majority, they will be the president, they will move forward and go for the election of the vice president. So I will open the floor for election, for nominations for president of the board.
I nominate Robert Campbell for president.
Second man.
Forever. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll declare the nominations closed. And Mr. Wright, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jivaden?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes. It's like I will be looking, actually, as the president for the, for the calendar year. For the election of the vice president, we'll do the same thing. Yeah, wait a minute. Let me put that, put my banner on. For the election of the vice president, we will do the same thing, and we will open the, open it for nominations at this time for vice president.
I'll nominate Jason Jivaden.
Mr. Jivaden, okay. Any others? Seeing none, we will close the nominations. And Mr. Wright, if you call the roll, please.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jivaden?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes. All right. All right, it's now official. And we'll move forward the rest. Do you want to read the rest, or do you want me to? Oh, great. Uh, for number seven, the time and date and location of the regular meetings will be here at the Portage Lakes Joint Vocational School, and it will be the third Thursday of each month starting at 6:00 PM. Uh, I don't think we have to vote on any of this, do we? I think so?
I, I think we usually vote on the regular meetings, but we do not vote on the liaisons. That's typically done there.
All right, so we'll vote on the time and date, and then, uh, we'll kind of play it by ear and see what we're gonna vote on next. So, do I have a motion to approve the third Thursday of each month at 6:00 PM for meetings throughout the year?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hofer.
Second.
And Mr. Chanacki. Mr. Wright?
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Jivaden?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, for the OSBA Legislative Liaison and Student Achievement Liaison, uh, we will put those in for, first of all, we'll take whomever would like to do the, anyone for the legislative liaison?
Mr. Hofer?
All right. And for the Student Achievement Liaison, anyone wanting to step up for that? Mr. Chanacki? Oh, thank you. All right. That's, uh, that's a longstanding tradition here of Mr. Chanacki, except the third person does that. Uh, we're starting that this year, as a matter of fact. It's a new tradition. Three seconds of silence is all we can take. Uh, for the consent calendar, all the normal things, board compensation, service fund, uh, investing, et cetera. Um, do you think we have to vote on that? Yeah, so we will take, do I have a, a motion to approve the consent calendar with all the, uh, kind of the standard things with purchasing agents, minutes, leave consultants, et cetera? I don't think there's anything extra, anything new to add this year. Okay, do I have a motion to approve that as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Jivaden.
Second.
And thank you, Mr. Hofer. Mr. Wright?
Mr. Jivaden?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Any visitor comments this evening for the organizational meeting? Seeing none, we will then move right into the regular meeting with the treasurer's reports and recommendations. Mr. Wright?
Item number one is a recommendation to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 15th, 2022 as presented.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. McGraw. Mr. Fouser was second. Mr. Wright?
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Would I be best to abstain?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Abstain.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Abstain.
Mr. Jivaden?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number two is a recommendation to approve the financial reports, check register, bank reconciliation, quarterly investment report, and comparative financial report for the month of December 2022 as presented, subject to audit.
So, thank you, Mr. Hofer.
Second.
And thank you, Mr. Jivaden. Mr. Wright?
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jivaden?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Abstain.
Mr. Cohen?
Abstain.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Abstain.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Abstain.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Just bear up here.
Just bear up. As far as things requiring action tonight, that's the last in the treasurer's section. However, the third piece here is the fiscal year '24 alternative tax budget. Um, we just take a moment every year and I kind of explain what we do with this tax budget. Um, the tax budget is required to be filed with the Summit County Fiscal Office. It basically justifies our need for the tax levies that we, that we receive in the county. Um, if you've been on this board, you know that I say this at virtually every meeting, and, Mr. Hercules, you get to hear this refrain again, like you have in the past. We have one operating levy here at Portage Lakes Career Center. It is permanent, was passed in 1983, started collecting in 1984. It was passed at 4.35 mils, and it collects currently at the statutory minimum rate of two mils. So that rate will never go below two. It's at the minimum. So, uh, one of the purposes of the tax budget as far as the county is concerned is to help the county set tax rates to fund the debt service payments on bonded debt, on voted debt, things like construction, uh, bond issues, things like that. We do not have any voted debt at Portage Lakes Career Center. We do have one outstanding piece of debt, which is an unvoted bond issue issued in April 2021 to fund construction of a, uh, safety services building on the other side of the parking lot, the south side of the parking lot. Um, that was a 10-year bond issue for a million dollars. When we issued it, uh, the interest cost to us was 1.805%, which is really awesome these days when you look at the rates that are out there. So, um, the benchmark rates on investments right now are pushing, uh, pushing 5%. So the fact that we were able to borrow at 1.8% to retain some of our cash balance, we can also push that cash balance into some investments that are yielding closer to four and a half, five percent. It's, it was a good, a good move. So, uh, that's the only piece of debt we have. But for purposes of the tax budget, that actually doesn't impact any tax rates because it's unvoted. We just pay for it out of the general fund. The next time you'll hear me talk about the bond issue will be July or August, uh, when we approve a transfer so that we can make the payment on those bonds. Um, and that concludes the treasurer's report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Mrs. Reddick?
Yes, Mr. Clark.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Greg Clark, Principal, Portage Lakes Career Center. Welcome new board members and those of you that are returning to us. So glad to have you. Um, I like to celebrate, uh, wins, and sometimes my wins are a little weird, but, um, you know, one of my biggest wins was coming back from our holiday break, and, um, had one of the best attendance days that we had for the school year on the first day back from our break. And it was probably about 8:45. Um, I got up and just wanted to walk the school and, you know, see how everything was going, and every single classroom was actively engaged, just right back into learning. And I made the U and went back outside and went back, back to my office and just kind of sat there and said, wow. And, and that's a testament to the students and their drive and, and also our staff, because we just got right back on it. So that, that was kind of my big aha since the last time, you know, we met. And, uh, as always, um, we're ready for the next crew to come, and that starts next week. Our acceptance boxes are going to the home schools, and the students who were accepted, uh, into their programs or possibly getting the information of, of a waiting list is coming next week. So, fast and furious, here we go. Be sitting at that July meeting soon enough, listening to, uh, Mr. Wright talk about, um, that. But more importantly than that, I get the honor to celebrate our Students of the Month, and each month we have faculty and staff, uh, recognize, and it doesn't have to be lab teachers or academic teachers. Oftentimes, we have, uh, other faculty in the building who recognize students. So it is an honor, and I really appreciate, um, you guys showing up tonight. It is hard for the students. They're so active and involved, and many of them are working. And, and the other two that didn't make it tonight, uh, were really trying. I spoke to them today. And I just want to bring their names up real quick. Anna Conca, Anna Concade, um, a cause student from Springfield, 11th grader, uh, was also to be honored tonight. And Avaya Totten in our culinary program from Coventry, uh, also, uh, will receive a packet later, but, uh, should be honored here tonight as well. But two young, um, men who are representing PLCC, and if you guys would go ahead and stand, I won't make you stand individually, so, uh, embarrassing, but I'll, I'll start out with Mark. Mark Danner, Dan, uh, Danner is in our Irma program, our Engineering's Robotic Manufacturing. Uh, he is a Green student, and Ms. Russell has nominated Mark. Mark is a wonderful student in class. He is helpful to others, and he tackles any project that comes through our doors. Mark is also the master of multitasking. Um, I'll also speak to Mark being a member of our Skills USA Board. He is a treasurer in that. He also attended the leadership conference, uh, with other, others of our students, and every single morning, Mark comes in and makes sure the office is doing what they're supposed to do and keeps us aligned down there. So we appreciate that from Mark. Ask Mark a couple of questions, uh, so you can get to know him. What, what is Mark's hobbies and interests outside of school? Sports, mainly basketball, video games, writing, coaching, and spending time with family and friends. If he could travel anywhere in the world, I've always wanted to travel to Paris because I love the French culture, and I want to visit such a beautiful city. And if he could be an animal for a day, he would be a falcon, because I would love to see how cool it would be to fly like they do and be able to travel around freely. So we appreciate it, Mark, being a role model student in our school. Thank you very much. Next, we have Mason Morris. He's in our welding program from Manchester, and Mr. Mariana, uh, the welding instructor, has nominated Mason. Mason is a leader in the classroom and in the lab. His welding ability is top of the class as well as his welding knowledge. Mason is very passionate about welding, always asking questions and looking for the answers, helping everyone along the way. Mason is a great representative of not only Manchester, but PLCC, and an ambassador for the welding community now and in the future. So, pretty nice words there, Mason. Mason's hobbies include hanging out with friends, hunting, fishing, and riding four-wheelers. If he could travel anywhere in the world, it would be the Bahamas. And if he could be an animal for a day, he would be a shark to discover the ocean. So, I like asking those questions. It gives us a little bit, uh, get to know the students a little bit better. Two fine representatives of PLCC, their instructors cannot say enough about each of them, uh, as well as many of the other students in our building. So, congratulations. And I also have the, uh, honor to introduce, um, Maureen Pazak, who is our medical technician instructor. And last time we visited, Jessica Love was, uh, one of our Students of the Month, and we had spoke to the fact that she had a big part in the pharmacy program that was added to MedTech. So we would like, uh, them to do a little presentation to you about what their program is about and what it represents. And when they're done speaking, we're just gonna take a quick jaunt around the hall and take a look at the new pharmacy, um, that we have set up. I promise there's no real medicine in... So Ms. Pazak and students, come on up.
Good evening. I just want to first say thank you so much for inviting us to this board meeting. It is really an honor for me as an instructor and for our students to be here at this board meeting. So thank you for this. Um, so when I received this amazing opportunity to be the MedTech instructor and build a program, I had no clue what it was going to be like actually creating the lab for which all of these amazing students, um, would be using. So it was quite a responsibility, and it was a big endeavor. But we had, I and the students had amazing support from everyone in this building. Um, and I will, I will never forget it, honestly. So it was a team effort, um, students, me, everyone who played a part in it. And I'm proud to say that it is now up and being used as a simulated pharmacy for our soon-to-be nationally certified pharmacy technicians, three of which are standing behind me. So I, I'm going to turn the program over to each one of them just to give you a little glimpse of what goes on in our pharmacy lab.
So in our practice pharmacy, we do everything that like a certified pharmacy technician does in a retail pharmacy, from receiving and preparing medications.
We also learn all of the soft skills, like, we also learn all of the soft skills, like how to interact with patients and, um, how to be professional.
Not only do we learn how to work with the public, but we follow all rules and guidelines set by HIPAA.
The board would like to just take a, a quick journey, up, stretch your feet. It's a good time just to take a quick peek at it. And if you have any questions for them, they're, they will fit to answer, I'm sure. I'm gonna show them where to go.
I have one question. So is this just a high school program, or is this a, a adult ed program?
At this point, yes.
Did it turn into a little bit?
It can, yes.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lisa Trednay. I am Assistant Superintendent. Just to tag along with that, also, I'm, I'm sure Maureen mentioned it, but we are, um, state-approved through the Ohio Board of Pharmacy, so we were very pleased about that. That's certainly something we will continue. Speaking of approval, uh, I received on January 10th the Council on Occupational Education approval of our reaffirmation. Uh, as you know, that we saw quite a few of those folks in September. Uh, some of you were gracious enough to lend your time to speak with that re-accrediting committee. And I'll just note a little something in their letter that is important to know. Um, the Council on Occupational Education is the governing body that accredits the Career Center essentially to offer federal financial aid. So it's super important for us in adult education to have, uh, and obviously super important for our students. Uh, most of our students, I would say at least 80%, rely on financial aid to take the full-time courses that we offer here in Adult Ed. Reaffirmation denotes that an institution has maintained quality programs, again undergone an extensive self-study and team review process, and has continued to meet the commission's high standards and conditions for accreditation. So we were thrilled to get that. Um, we have now another five years where we continue to compile data, report, uh, collect every possible thing that could ever mention Adult Ed, and we'll do it again in five years. So, um, this is a lovely piece of paper that is currently hanging on my fridge. So, in addition to the Council on Occupational Education, I just wanted to mention that both the high school and adult education will share two large career fairs coming up in March. Um, last year, we had such tremendous response that we decided to divide them into two days so that they were specific for industries, um, and that our students would be more targeted with the employers that they were seeing. So on March 2nd from 9 to 2, we will have employers from healthcare, design, communication, and marketing industries, culinary and hospitality industries, IT, and law and public safety. And then on March 3rd, we are focusing on engineering, manufacturing, and machining, construction trades, and transportation systems. So we'll be a pretty busy place, March 2nd and 3rd. If you have time, feel free to stop by. Lunch is 10:30 to 11:15, sponsored by our Neon Lime students. So it'll be a very good lunch. Um, everyone is welcome. Last, but, uh, well, actually, and you know what, in conjunction with that, I feel it's important to note that, um, placement is an opportunity for the high school students, uh, to leave school early and go out to work. This hopefully will help to fuel those placement positions for our high school students. In December, um, for the time card report that we had, we have over 30 students right now currently on placement. So they are out working in the field. I expect by the time the senior year is over, we will have anywhere between 60 to 80. That is pretty much the norm. Um, so this comes at a great time for our students to connect with employers so that they have somewhere safe to land after graduation, both high school and adult. That's the goal. As Mr. Clark said, uh, he's ready for the next crew to come, and in Adult Ed, we're looking forward to the next crew as well. Um, we've already started marketing. We're ready to roll. Uh, we currently are sitting at 142 students. At this point, we have 166 for the entire year. Next year, we'll be working on several retention initiatives, and I, I'm sure you've heard me mention, my goal is to graduate 200. Well, I'm, I'm really hoping to do that already for next year. I have 60 students enrolled in Adult Ed, and it's only January, and that gives me a great deal of hope. Um, so I wanted to mention too that our espetition programs for both day and evening are already full. Uh, and we're not quite sure how that happens, but, but we're thrilled to have it. Uh, and we have, last year, we had a bit of a dip in nursing. We can only attribute that to healthcare providers having absolute fatigue with COVID. Um, but this year, we already have 17 interviews scheduled for our practical nursing program, which is again, very exciting. Uh, we, we were glad to see that that was a blip and not a trend. So we're looking forward to filling those classes as well. It's nice to see all of you back, and it's nice to greet all the newbies. I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. I might have a few, few items before we dive into the very short agenda. Um, as you know, uh, from your home school, the January is School Board Appreciation Month, and those of you who were on the board, um, last year have a, a certificate of appreciation. But I'd, I'd like to note that there are over 700 school boards in the state of Ohio, and you all serve on two of them. And the importance of a school board to support public, and I say that loudly, public education and keeping the local control is so very important, and I appreciate your service. And, and I know quite often it comes with a lack of appreciation unless you get chocolates. But, but we do appreciate what you do, so thank you. Um, I'm gonna tag on some of the recruitment and enrollment. We have over 300 current 10th graders that will enter, uh, our school next year as juniors, and, and we're very excited about that. Um, I've mentioned in broad the "I got accepted" boxes that will be hand-delivered to each student in, um, next week in Coventry, Springfield, and Green. And then in Manchester, um, we would just hand them off because they like to do things different. That's okay. But I just wanted to, to make a, a note of that, um, that we're very excited about that. Our, our challenge now, um, is not the same as yours in K-12 in that thinking about money. Our challenge is looking at our space and trying to figure out the best way to utilize our space. And we've made some changes, and we're gonna have to continue to make changes to be able to serve the needs of, of the students of the future. Um, as you know, we have a couple of programs that we would like to add in the near future, and, and space is what we have to decide how we're going to use that. So stay tuned for that. Um, at your little area, there's a postcard about, um, I emailed you about the great result of our students at the Kent State Scholastic Competition, um, where over 100 students received some sort of award, not students, because many of them received several awards, but 27 of them received either a gold or a silver key. Those students are currently on display at Kent State Stark in the Fine Arts Building through February 1st. At February's board meeting, an hour before, we're gonna invite those students and their parents to a reception, and we're gonna have the artwork displayed out here for you. And it really is amazing. Um, the students put together a virtual tour that has been put out on social media that is really, really cool if you get the opportunity to do that. But we're very proud of them, and they are very proud of, to be affirmed by people outside of PLCC, which was really cool. that is really, really cool if you get the opportunity to do that. But we're very proud of them and they are very proud to be affirmed by people outside of PLCC, which was really cool. So I'm going to jump into the agenda now. Second item is employment. We have one adult education contract for Cynthia Humbert, who will be coming on as a practical nurse clerical assistant as they begin to work with the Board of Nursing to get ready for that. And I'm asking you to approve that employment contract for the rest of the year.
So moved. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Second. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Mr. Wright?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fauzer?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Jivaden?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number three, board policy updates. These are four policies that you saw last month as a first reading, but basically they're just a legal reference update and two of them have some language changes due to legal changes. For example, I'll just give you a brief example. The recruiters in the schools, that change had to do with adding the ability that we must provide the emails of the students to the military. That's just an example. Two of them was the law reference change and we just had to add that in there. So I'm recommending that the board approve the board policies as listed.
So moved. Thank you, Mr. Hofer.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chinaki. Mr. Wright?
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fauzer?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw left the meeting at 6:40 PM. Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Jivaden?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number four, equipment donations. As you know, running our labs is an expensive venture and we are very, very lucky to have business partnerships who donate materials to us. And this list that you see are materials that will be well-used by our building trades and our welding programs. So I'm asking you to approve these donations.
So moved. Thank you, Mr. Fauzer. Mr. Wright?
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Fauzer?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw? Is gone. Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Jivaden?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. Under new business, anything for this evening? The only thing I would like to say is kind of the new business piece. And I, assuming that the board members have been here, received, like, everybody can do the blue sky and get the minutes and everything electronically. I think the new ones also were, all that, everything is good. So in our quest to become more green, not more light green, but more green, to, you know, to start with our beautiful solar array out there.
Wow.
Maybe you'd like to say if we moved to maybe a more electronic version and that maybe we just print the current agenda and then all the supporting documents, we could just do through the blue sky. And if anybody wants a hard copy, you can just contact Mr. Wright or Ms. Redmond.
That's a great idea.
And they can get that. Get that. I think it'll save a little bit of prep time and, you know, a little bit of that.
Tree huggers will like that.
I know, right? Well, I saw the Carter lumber, you know, they sent some stuff. So might as well just keep rolling on with that. Other than that, that's really the only new business that I had. And so we'll move into the board members informal. Mr. Jivaden, we'll start down at your end if you don't mind.
Welcome, all the new and returning members. Always nice to see familiar faces. And, you know, it's one of those demarcation points, right? Now we're halfway plus through the, and it's amazing how fast it goes. It's, you know, relax, sit back and kind of watch it so that it doesn't get away from you. That's all.
Yeah, thanks. Mr. Chinaki?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. A pleasure to be here this evening and joining the board for this year. I went on a tour with Ms. Redmond of the facility yesterday and was blown away by just the offerings and the students and the administrators and the pride that they take in the building and really, really excited and looking forward to just continuing that and hoping that I can contribute in a meaningful way. But again, very, very happy and proud to be here alongside of all of you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chinaki. Mr. Fauzer?
I'm always all about the kids getting up there and our little tour, going in the other room. And then you look at the donations, the Carter Jones lumber for over $1,800 and then you have the tube to steal for another 11. I mean, and the grading, just the scrap value alone. Those are the things that make a difference. The kids actually get out there. I don't know how green the shingles are, but.
Green enough, right?
Green enough.
They're not the trash, they're not in the.
Boy, it's $1,800 worth of green.
Right, exactly.
Different green.
I'm excited to be here and learn more and I can't wait to get my tour, so that's really all I have.
Mr. Hercules?
It's good to be back. At your service.
Mr. Hope?
Welcome, new board members. Just good to see you back. Mr. Clark, Lisa, Kim, and our supporting staff, thank you for all what you do. I think as I've looked around some of the areas of our counties with OSBA, I think Portage Lakes Career Center is a gem, growing and blossoming. And I thank you and that's a tribute to all of you. So thank you very much.
Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Welcome to the new members, returning members, new members. And I just loved that tour of the pharmacy. That was phenomenal. And, you know, what a value-added it is to this place. And you can tell that the instructor was really, really enthusiastic about what she did. I mean, super long commute just to attend this board meeting. And it's exciting that those students that graduate are nationally certified. So, I mean, kudos to PLCC for thinking about, you know, starting up a program like that. And there's so many areas in which PLCC is innovating. And that's a credit to our fantastic superintendent and administrative team and the teachers. And look forward to more tours, maybe throughout the year and exploring other parts of the school.
We will. Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Again, welcome, all those returning and those who are new. I think you'll find this is a very unique, very unique spot to be in. And I think once you kind of look at it and you say, "Wow, I didn't know that was there." And you do that a lot and it truly is a tribute to Kim and her staff and her visions to, you know, to keep moving at the front edge of things rather than always kind of the trailing, you know. Well, it works, let's just keep doing the same thing over and over. So we do appreciate that. Just to reiterate, the Neon Lime is back open for business, right?
It is.
Tuesdays?
Wednesdays and Thursdays, 11 to 1. It's been very full, actually, after the holidays.
Well, and if you go there, you're going to be extremely full also when you're done. Because it's like, I've been there twice and it was just like, oh my gosh. If I come here once a week, it'd be like 300 pounds. But, yeah, it really is amazing. And also the hair and nails.
Yes, all of our hair, nails, facials, they are very busy. The outside is coming in to visit us. They're learning customer service as well.
And you can do all those reservation stuff online? Is there links in there from there? And if you don't remember what they are, just call and talk to Kim or Lisa or Chris.
They don't offer shaving.
You know, I will say that our cosmetology students do need practice with males. So, anyone?
I can't help them.
But they do need practice.
Very good.
We'll do anything.
Send us the information out here.
Yeah, and with that, I think we're, I think we're good. So do I have a motion to adjourn for this evening? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Jivaden.
Second.
And Mr. Hercules. All those in favor? Can we just do a mass vote?
Absolutely.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Then we adjourn until next time.
February 16th, 6:00 PM.
Yeah, if you come a little early, you see the gallery, it'll still be here, but.